All right, thank you, thank you. All right. Let's go ahead and keep going on and we're gonna go ahead and jump right into number four, which is a presentation, discussion, and direction concerning the budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026. And this is a special meeting for us to take care of the budget. Thank you.
All right. Let me get situated over here. All right, a couple of the items I wanted to go through, um, really just give you all an updated, like, copy of where we're at with all the, um, the different funds. We have, uh, obviously, the departments that are all within the general fund. Uh, we have, um, now provided you all the, uh, utility fund and where we sit on those. And then, um, the special revenue funds, which is court security, court technology, hotel motel, all that kind of stuff. So, um, which I know y'all hadn't seen before, so, um, not really any changes to be done there necessarily. Just more for y'all see it, to see kind of, uh, the full makeup of, um, of everything. Um, in what was sent out, um, well, it starts with the, uh, general fund, uh, summary. And, um, I am pleased to say, at least at this point, it does show a, uh, a balanced, uh, budget. We were able to, I think last time we had, uh-
Thanks, man!
Yeah, we had about, uh, give or take close to three hundred thousand. And we kind of were looking at various ways and trying to move stuff around and figure out how we could kind of cover some of that. One of the things, when you go to the actual admin, uh, portion, uh, is, um, you'll see under the revenue, uh, really the last line item, it's actually in, uh, if you have the color copy, it's in, uh, kind of that tannish brown color, um, is, uh, transfer in from, uh, CDs of one hundred and forty-seven thousand. And so there are two CDs that still remain at Lidl State Bank that, um, uh, total, one's like a thousand dollars and the other one's the one hundred and forty-six thousand eight oh eight, um, forward. Uh, so closing out both of those to be able to cover some of the costs, um, and, which we would've closed out anyways. Um, uh, so just closing those a little earlier than we had, uh, originally anticipated to cover some of that.
And there's no penalties or anything on that?
No, part of our agreement with-
That's awesome, though.
Yeah, part of our agreement with, uh, the bank is that there is no, uh, penalty or anything on that. Um, other than that, that is what we have, uh, there. Uh, the one thing I would like to note is that ad valorem tax, um, which is the first line item on the, um, uh, the revenues portion of the admin side, uh, we, uh, just got, gosh, probably four o'clock this afternoon, uh, the tax rates, uh, from the tax assessor. So, they were due to us, um, last Friday, but unfortunately, they had some glitches in their systems and things like that. Um, so we, we threw together some rough estimates and, and this afternoon, like I said, we just got it at four o'clock. So, I do just wanna kind of go over, uh, these with you. I'll leave one after now, Richard, in case he shows. Um, and we'll kind of walk through some of this. So that, that ad V, um, is going to change a little bit, um, based on what we have here. So, what they're showing, um, the, uh, if you look at the total tax rate column, uh, that top one, the three nine six oh one seven, is what, at least, again, very surface level review of the document. So, you know, we'll wanna make sure that this is a hundred percent accurate when we go through it, since we just got it at four o'clock. Uh, but that is what they are showing to be our, uh, no new revenue rate. Um, so, uh, obviously with additional, um, growth that's come online and stuff like that, that normally you'll see that number decrease from what our current tax rate is.
Is that the normal? I mean, would that be the no new decrease? Or the, the maximum allowed without having to-
Yeah, so that, that is the no new revenue rate. If we, like, bringing in the same amount, having the same amount of services, this is what this rate would be. The voter approval rate-
Right.
Uh, which is what you can go to without exceeding, if you exceed it, then you would have, uh, to hold the election and that kind of stuff.
And what number was that?
That number is that bottom number, which is the four four six four oh five.
Okay, that one.
Yeah, so we just gotta show some general breakdowns, um, of what that would look like. So you have what the, the O and M portion of that tax rate would be. Um, the INS is the debt portion of, uh, the, uh, what we could expect to pull in. Obviously, uh, the new value column, one thing that, um, I don't think we were really looking at before, um, was some of the, the growth that's not even considered in some of the, uh, the tax rate stuff that's come before us before. Um, and something that Yvonne pulled out, was able to show, uh, that with that, the, they don't even contemplate this in the tax rate. So it's additional kind of on the table money, basically, for us there. Um, so that's what that column is. You have the total tax rate, then we've just kind of pulled down some numbers. Um, and then the, uh, what would actually be listed in the general fund. So what you would see on that first line item in the admin, uh, is whatever that number aligns to in that, uh, GF total O and M column, uh, that you see there. So, again, the number we had originally put in there of, uh, one million two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, the closest one to that, uh, or exceeding that is that, um, the one million two hundred and forty-one thousand, it's almost middle of the page, at a total tax rate of, uh, four two five. Uh, so that's not going fully to the voter approval, kind of in the middle of the two, of where we're currently at compared to. But obviously, you have all the way to go, if you wanted to, all the way up to that voter approval rate. So, again, these are some real rough numbers, uh, kind of towards the end of the, the later columns. So we base, uh, an average home value of two hundred thousand dollars. Um, and what that tax rate, if proposed, would be for, uh, those, uh, on a two hundred thousand dollar valued home. So, uh, under that same category of using the, the four two five, you're looking at an additional fifty-three dollars and forty cents on that, that particular two hundred thousand dollar home. So, for the year. So, again, very rough numbers, getting that four kind of through us, you know.
It's still good numbers when you-
It is good numbers, it is, it is good numbers.
It's good numbers, so, when you're actually comparing them. It's good.
So, um, one thing, uh, we will need to, um, uh, obviously at an upcoming meeting, propose a tax rate. So I will need direction from council on what we wanna propose. The thing, just to remember, is, uh, we can always go with less, but we can't exceed. So if you went at the four two five, and say we propose a four two five, you can go under that, but you wouldn't be able to go up to the voter approval. So my suggestion would be to propose the voter approval, and if you want to come down off of that at the time we actually adopt the tax rate, then that would, we would do that.
So you're looking at the point four four.
Yes. Yeah. At least to propose, and then, again, we, we back off. You know, if, if that's something council, direction-wise, wants to do.
Yeah, I think, I think it'd be good to go ahead and do that. I mean, even, even with a point four four-
Well, I mean, I can tell you, we just had a meeting with, uh, ASCO's mayors and, uh, there, there was ones in, like, the seventies.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're still, um, I wanna say it's at least fifteen, ten.
Fifteen to twenty?
Yeah.
Yeah, difference?
So-
Between the next one?
Yeah, we're doing good. We're doing really, really good with our tax rate compared to other communities around this area.
This doesn't factor in any unknown new revenue we're gonna have.
Correct, this is all, I mean, this is what we, we think, this is what's underground, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
So more, more homes go in than expected, more, you know, just, yeah, I mean, a, a, commercial comes online. I mean, you know, anything could change this, obviously, but, yeah.
When we need to make that proposal?
So we'll have, uh, originally on the calendar, I had it as, uh, proposing on, uh, Monday's meeting. Um, but, um, with us not knowing if we can have the number, um, we, we can still add it, I guess theoretically, if we need to. But, um, it'll either be that meeting or, or upcoming meeting. So, but it'll be taken care of in enough time statutorily to, to ensure we're in a clear, so, I'll not reveal it. Um, the other thing, uh, on the admin side, this contemplates, uh, some of what we, on, on the, um, on the expense portion, uh, with salaries. This includes, um, a, uh, a, a change in, uh, how many hours and what that rate ultimately comes up if, uh, if Yvonne decides to stay on with us, um, and what that looks like. Um, and then also because of that, and if, based on the scenario we're working through, there was a little bit of savings there. Um, I was asked to look at, um, maybe going up on the percentage across the board from three percent to four percent. Um, and so this one that you're seeing today and that was sent out earlier does contemplate a four percent across the board. So, if you wanted to go back down to three percent, then obviously, you'd have a surplus under this particular portion, uh, of the, uh, the general fund. So, other than that, there's no other changes. Uh, well, I'm sorry, the only other change from the admin portion was we, we did remove the, uh, chamber of commerce expense out of the admin and the general fund. Uh, since we do pay that, uh, if we're gonna continue to pay it or we, we, uh, don't pay it regardless, that is out of hot tax funds. So we wanted to make sure that that expense was actually reflected in hot tax.
We're getting it lined up correctly, yeah.
So, that would be the chamber of commerce.
Chamber of Commerce.
Yes, we'll get to that one, so. We'll get to that one.
But this is basically lining up correctly, so thank you for doing that.
Yeah, and, and you can see some of the other ones we talked about with, you know, realigning and moving around, um, and, and just making sure that they're in the right, uh, fund and/or, you know, in the right department. So, unless there's any questions on the admin side, we can kind of move through, uh, the other ones go very quickly.
I'm running out of mics.
Oh my god, again? Well, I did change the battery on this one, so.
Well, now it's turning lighter. Let's just leave it there.
All right, uh, so, uh, animal care and control, uh, no changes from what was seen at the last budget, um, uh, meeting on those. Um, really, across the board, when you get to community center, council, uh, municipal court, library, PD, um, no, uh-
And we have all three vehicles for the PD rate?
All three vehicles are contemplated and this is one. Yes. And two, one of the things, I think it's on the admin side. Yeah, it's on the admin side. We, we stuck a thousand dollars in revenue for asset sales. And what that would be is potentially selling the, the one car that we're replacing out of, uh, PD stuff. Since two would be new and one would be a replacement of an existing vehicle.
Other options?
Yes, yeah, I mean, obviously, I hope we get more than a thousand, but, you know.
We actually, I was really surprised last time with the trucks, how well they did.
The trucks do well.
I was like, wow, that worked out really good.
Knowing the charger and how cursed it is, I'd probably be like, you know.
It's all good. Hey, I see it out there every day, so.
I, it is, it, yeah.
You're gonna see a whole lot soon.
It's out there.
So, again, no, no changes, uh, in the general fund, other than what we discussed. Um, so if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer on that front, but otherwise, we can move to utility funds as well.
Counsel, anything? Good.
Uh, so utility fund, this is when, I mean, things get interesting. Um, so, uh, water, um, we did present this, um, I know Mayor, you were not, uh, here, but, uh, we did present this at the budget meeting where you were at Calhoun. Um, nothing has changed from what was, uh, submitted, um, other than some little nuance, you know, number tweaking. Um, but this one does remain in a, um, in the hole, uh, in the red of five hundred thirteen thousand six hundred and sixty-four. Um, the other thing to note with this is, and, and there's probably some additional conversations of whether it goes into the water fund or if we can absorb some of the cost, maybe in the general fund, uh, is, uh, really trying to bring, uh, the gentleman that we, uh, that has the licenses. Um, his costs are, are factored in to what the budget is. However, he's been a tremendous help, and Mayor probably can, you know, speak to some of that too, just in the last, literally, two weeks of, you know, really cleaning up some things that needed to get taken care of. And so I don't wanna miss an opportunity to not bring someone like that on board with us. Um, we've talked with existing leadership at Public Works and, and what that would look like. Um, the, I think we ran some, some basic numbers today, and it looks like total cost of bringing him in would be around that ninety-three thousand, uh, uh, give or take, um, and that's, that's-
That's including-
GMRLs, every, everything, that's, that's everything across the board. Um, and so, uh, what, depending on how we work that, whether, again, it's in the general fund and we, we go dip into some text pool money to supply, you know, that back and, yeah. So there, there's options that we have, um, but we do need to obviously cover some of this too, with, you know, being in the hole on, on this side. On the sewer side, um, you'll notice that it's, it's only twenty-four hundred off. So, I can find twenty-four hundred somewhere, uh, or twenty-five hundred. Um, and, and there's still some little tweaks on some things, uh, that we've talked about on, on that particular one that still need to happen. So, you know, I'm not worried about sewer, it's more on the, on the water side.
So, uh, this gentleman, so if you all remember, we had people that were helping us out with our licenses. Great folks, great people, but the difference between those individuals and this individual, this individual not only with license, but has spent a lot of time in our facilities. Hands-on, checking, figuring things out, coming up with better ways, better efficiencies of things, of being able to do, how to do things, and helping our, our, our folks out. So it's been, it's been really good being able to see him, uh, just be able to make an impact. I mean, he technically could've actually just done the basic stuff that he needed to with what we were paying him, but he, he's actually gone beyond what we expected him to do. And he's done, he's done a tremendous job being able to do that. Um, and he enjoys working here. Uh, just watching him and how he, he deals with the other guys and the guys dealing with him.
He fits in really well.
Seems, seems really good. Uh, here comes Richard. And so, this is, uh, this is a good opportunity for us to be able to leverage on that. Might be a little bit of a lack of timing of when.
Yeah, I mean, that's the other thing, you know, we, I think, uh, council's done this before, but, um, you know, there's, there could be options to not even put the whole cost in here and say, we bring in, you know, mid-year even, you know, so we contemplate those costs and figure what that is. Obviously, understanding that we will be on the full runs of the cost, you know, the next year, but, um-
We just need to be able to compensate him with what he's doing right now, because he is doing a lot more. So we either do it that way, or we actually bring him in and he's part of our organization. That, that just gives us more time with him being here and helping the other guys. The other thing he's been doing, he's been pseudo, uh, educating, teaching.
Yeah.
So-
The training piece.
Yeah, so-
I know it's so important to us.
Yeah, for those that are actually going to be testing here in the next few months, uh, that's a great thing for them to be able to associate and be able to understand. Which, once again, we didn't have that. Nothing wrong that they needed to, or something that said that they needed to, but they, this guy has actually taken a little bit more to help out the guys.
Um, he might be coming around sometime.
Coming around?
Richard, sometimes he-
So aren't our water fund, we are spending more than we're bringing in?
Well, part of, part of it, if you look at the very bottom of the, uh, the water, the last two line items and the expenses are on payments, which basically equates to that five hundred thirteen, I mean, it probably will more, actually.
Just make the payments, by the way.
Obviously, we have to make payments, we can't not make those payments, uh, and the, the interest that goes. Um, Yvonne, I don't wanna misspeak, but I think we're looking at maybe ways to defray some of that into debt service or-
In time.
Yeah, so, trying to help lessen that five hundred thousand, you know, so. That, we're, we, we talked with Samco once, and we're gonna continue to talk to them and what that looks like, but we don't wanna-
And I understand that expenses-
Yeah.
Is based on future development and, and, and future customer, right?
Yes.
So at some point, it balances out or, you know, and I can't exceed it, that's the idea?
That's correct.
That is correct, and it's just basically- But for budget purposes, we gotta look for the whole year.
And the one, the one thing that helped us in previous years, 'cause we obviously looked at it last year, right? Um, one of the things that we've done is- What the previous, previous people had was the, the lawn funds, and they were using that as like a wash-
Yeah.
To be able to show that, but in reality, it needs to be completely separate. Um, so that, that threw us off this year by making the change, but it, it was a needed change, right? That, that had to happen, so, um, yeah.
Yeah, I remember that being mentioned previous.
Um, the only other utility fund, and it's nothing, nothing major, it, it is balanced, is the, uh, the drainage utilities. So, um, we're basically showing, and we may not use all that two hundred thousand in the next year with engineering. Obviously, we know we've approved the, them to report on some of the planning and, um, of the master drains plan. But you, basically, to show, hey, what we collect, we're gonna put out, you know, and, and, again, that, that could change what actually spent throughout the year, but that's how we, we show that, like, so. And that is the utility.
It's good, it's good work.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate that. I know you guys have spent a lot of time, Yvonne and Zach, just back and forth trying to write some numbers together. So we appreciate that.
Um, the special revenue funds, uh, and this is stuff, a lot of them were, uh, a part of municipal court previously, um, a handful of them, um, but really, they are because of dedicated funds only for specific purposes. Uh, we wanted to, uh, move those out of the general fund and actually have them called out as legally they should be. Um, and so, uh, obviously, the court security fund is the first one. And all the, all of these will show, um, uh, well, most of them will show a balance, um, on them. So, what we're bringing in, we're saying, will it spend? Traditionally, I would say that normally hasn't been the case, it's not like we're going and spending a bunch of technology in court and stuff. So most of that, you know, won't truly get, you know, expended, but, you know, we, we're for showing that, so. Court technology is the next one. Uh, child safety fund, again, these are all originally in the court. Uh, the next one is the, um, hotel motel fund. Uh, and so what we have shown here, uh, is what we project, uh, as the incoming, uh, revenue on our hotel motel tax, um, a little bit of interest on what is sitting, um, in, in text pool, uh, specifically, uh, for the original account that was the, um, hotel motel, uh, fund account at the bank, uh, that we moved to text pool. Uh, and then, um, we've gone in there and we're creating, uh, three new accounts under the expense portion, uh, for the, uh, the music fest at the thirty thousand, which is typically what we have, uh, expended for that in the past. The baseball lighting, which council agreed to pay the, um, annual payment, uh, for, of sixty-seven seven. And then we have the, um, chamber of commerce expense, uh, at the thirty-five thousand.
Is that in the claim with how many?
Ten. Ten. Now, I will say, um, and I don't think I'm, I've let council know this, uh, so I apologize if I haven't. Uh, but, uh, one of the things, I don't really wanna give kudos to them, but, one of the things that, uh, was done, uh, prior to us ending with EMC, they had reached out to a foundation, um, that, uh, gave, uh, us a fifty thousand dollars if we were to show that we secured eighty percent of the rest of the funding. So when we decided to actually finance the project, um, that was sufficient enough to get that money from them. So we, we do, they've provided that check for us, so we at least are covering, you know, close to one year's payment, uh, of that. And we've already made the first year's payment, um, already, so, um, but didn't wanna let you know that.
So, just to make sure that council, because we're looking at budgets-
Yeah.
And then specifically in this, so the numbers that we're looking at here is just looking at the year within itself. This doesn't reflect what we have in the pool right now, or we actually have-
That's correct, there is a fund, there is a balance in the bank.
So there is a balance already sitting out there.
Yeah.
Okay, that is separate from the numbers that you actually see in there.
I didn't think-
So you can, you kinda have an idea, so, uh, yeah, just for your awareness.
Yes, there is, there is a balance, yeah.
The number is larger than what we see in here. So in a sense, it's good for us, let me just get it out.
And so based on the, uh, what we anticipate to bring in, um, compared to what we, a couple of the ones we've committed, and then obviously, we've done in the past, do show us, you know, um, uh, red, uh, in, in this particular, uh, twelve five. Um, I, I will say, on the chamber of commerce, um, because I know that's been a hot button issue. So you can see there some of the actual numbers that have been spent. I don't think that twenty-three, twenty-four is a hundred percent accurate, um, because, uh, I, yeah, there's probably expenses that were put into that that actually shouldn't have been there and probably needed to be realigned, but I obviously can't go back in that year, that's already closed and do that. Uh, but you can see, you know, generally, uh, we either got very close or, or, you know, right at the thirty-five thousand that we had previously done. I know that was something that, um, council on previous, who were looking for like, you know, expenses that had been done, you know, the last few years. Um, currently, and, and this is a little outdated, that we may have made, uh, some more additional payments, but twenty-four, twenty-five physical activities, and at that seventeen thousand, there may, like I said, be a little bit of bump that that we've paid out. Um, one thing council did ask, when the chamber came and made their presentation, they had asked for some, some documentation. Um, to the, to date, I have not received that, even though I have asked, uh, for that from, uh, them. Um, and so, um, I don't really, I can't provide context of the things that they should be providing, just 'cause they have not been able to provide that, um, up to this point. Um, but, um-
Do we have, do we have, and of course, tonight, we can't take any action, but just for discussion purposes, do, do we have something in place where they have to be able to provide information? I mean, it's not an automatic payment to them, right?
No, they, they provide us a breakdown of, of various expenses that, um, are theoretically, um, eligible expenses under the agreement that we originally had with them. Um, and so, um, you know, every once in a while, there's one on there, or a couple on there that, you know, when Ronnie gets it from them, uh, it used to be like that, but obviously Ronnie now, uh, that she might go, no, that's not something we, you know, pay for. So some of that isn't just a full, like, here's the list and we pay it, right? There, there is a check of some of that. Um, but generally, yes, they, they are providing some expenses.
So it gives you an opportunity to be able to sit down with them, um, with anything else that we use on that and-
I, I will say, as, just even today, I, I spoke with, uh, the chamber president at, uh, Commocation while we were there, and she had indicated that, uh, the particular person that was supposed to send that, because, um, although the chamber obviously is involved in the shop supply, though, um, you know, there's been one particular person that's kind of been the, the real person behind, you know, some of that and, and handling a lot of that. And it hadn't been traditionally, uh, well, it was the president prior, but it's not, obviously, the president now, um, had, that's been handling some of that. And so, um, she had been told by that particular person that it had been sent over, but obviously, I confirmed with her that I had not received it, so, um, yeah. So it's a, it's a little bit back and forth, and, um, I, I think regardless, there's, there's definitely buttoning up if we're gonna continue, um, of, of what we're comfortable paying for, what they truly need to provide, and if they're not paying, you know, if they're not providing it, you know, building in protection for us.
The problem is, we've been saying this for the past three years.
Yeah.
And they are not giving us what we ask. And in twenty-two, I was the one that made the motion.
Okay.
And it was on a one-year basis, and then we were gonna reevaluate. And in that time, they were supposed to give us a breakdown. I've asked several times throughout the years to get that breakdown. When the president was up here, I asked- When the president was up here, I asked again. And it's still not here. So by putting this item into the budget, are we committed to putting that money for this item?
I mean, you're, by putting it in there, you're basically saying that's what we're, you know, we're going to be providing. Which is why the things.
By doing that, it says that the money is available, right? You still have the opportunity, because guess what? We every month you get the, here's a bill, we're gonna pay for that.
But it appears that in the previous years, not only did we pay, but in the one year we exceeded it.
Yeah, I don't, again, I don't think that's accurate.
However, I have not seen, as a council member, I have not seen this list
Correct.
of what it is that this person or this entity does. So when I brought this up, it was brought before council. And it's probably more my fault that it got into the budget, because I do not remember approving it in the budget. I do not, and to be fair, we didn't itemize a lot of this stuff. So it's very easily that it could have been included in the previous budget. Now that it's been brought out and now that I am aware of it, I don't like it. I don't like it there, because we have a requirement as a council. Initially, we voted and there was one day and then the other four were voted for, right? But this item should have remained at council, because the council never approved this. We never sat here in chambers and approved this item. It got introduced into the budget and now we've been paying that out. I don't like it there. I wish they would have came. I'm all for supporting this item, right? But what is it that we're asking for that's not being, that we're not asking for something that cannot be given to us? It's very simple. Tell us what this person did or this group did or this entity did and break it down. And I have not seen that. Man, I don't like this item.
I'm with you. I was just gonna say, why don't we just go ahead and schedule a meeting with them this next week?
That sounds good.
Sure.
And we go ahead and put it on there.
I mean, again, that's, I knew there was a lot of conversation around this, that's why it's, you know, highlighted blue, right? Because it's, it's like, we need to, we need to have a conversation, because we've had multiple times where we're talking about this.
Have a meeting with the lady that's the president, because the one that was talking to her, she just started, she said, right?
Yeah, so.
She didn't know much.
Yeah, Catherine had just started shortly after we had that meeting a couple of months ago. Pam was the one that had primarily handled most of this prior and again, was the person that had indicated, that was told to me today that should have sent me, but obviously I don't have it.
I just would like to see it spelled out exactly what this, you know, what it is that this, yeah, what the money's gonna be used for. If it's gonna be focused in one particular area, then okay, let us know. If they're gonna come out and help with the music fest, for example, help promote that. Couple of years ago, I personally went and I was there at the table. And I did not receive any help. I was the one that had to ask the questions. So I did not see where the city was benefiting from that, other than the table being there. And I know our employees are very busy, they've got a lot of things to do, but that table could be in the front office. And I guarantee you, that visitor would get a lot more help than what I saw. So there's my rant, I just, I do not like this item.
Well, we can definitely schedule something that's not.
Well, we need to. We need to. We need to. We thought, we thought two meetings ago before I went on vacation and we had that meeting that they were gonna go ahead and put something together. So if we don't have anything at this point, we definitely need to go ahead and sit down with them.
It's not lack of trying on my part to get it.
No.
I do wanna make sure that's.
He is the one that made the motion, I thought it was a good idea to very clearly that. So that's hopefully we can get this resolved, leave it there, if we get what we're asking for.
And we just need to get the information.
Well, and we have, I mean, we obviously have time, you know.
Yeah, tonight is just.
We are limited, we are limited, but we do have time to make that adjustment if we need to pull it or whatever. But we'll get that scheduled.
Great, thank you.
Anything else on hotel motel? And then the other last few ones are just our impact fees, water sewer and the water acquisition fees that were pulled out as special. Nothing really helpful with that. Increases, just because we are getting, as we know, the more homes, those are paid at this time, so. General increases across the board on those.
So Zach and Yvonne, I know it's a correlation with this, but how are we doing with our account, the number of accounts? We mentioned the two CDs and everything, just being able to match them up.
Yeah, bank accounts, I think we have four, five? Yeah, four. And one of those, one of those is the C D B G, which we gotta keep you until we finalize that. And then our normal operating account, we have the credit card account. And then I think there's one P D forfeiture that we can, we can close and have it, just like we've done the others. We're just waiting on some things to make sure that aligns appropriately on the backend. The rest are CDs. So, well, I apologize, and the infrastructure account, we're paying the C O money out of, so.
So on our next audit, are they gonna say?
I think it's gonna look a heck of a lot better, right? I mean, we've closed.
It's just been mentioned many years.
I mean, half or three-fourths of what, you know, we had, you know, we've closed and moved either to text pool or into the general, or into the U P account, so. Yeah, that, I'm hoping, we're going right now through their preliminary stuff with the audit. They've been asking for documents, so we'll see what comes out of, you know, in the end, but that's just.
And the cool thing about this year, council, is remember, we had made a decision that we would switch after five years. So this is completely another set of eyes looking at us. So this is gonna be a really good opportunity to be able to do that. But now the accounts, if I remember correctly, at one point, we were up to about eighteen?
Well, I think it was higher than that there.
Okay.
Yeah, I wanna say close to.
I'm not counting the CDs, so.
Oh, okay, then, yeah, probably.
Yeah, I'm just counting the accounts, so it's pretty high, so.
So eighteen to four?
Yeah, so.
And even at that, I think some of them are still, we're still working on it, can close them here soon.
But if you all remember, that was, you know, the process within itself, it even started with Matt when he was on there, because we didn't know where certain things were lined up and we were trying to put things lined up correctly. So it was making sure everything got put in there correctly before we started closing accounts down, to be able to do that. So Yvonne, thank you so much. Zach, thank you, thank you, thank you, for taking it to the next level, so this is good.
So that's hit on the budget numbers, unless somebody has anything else. Largely other than making sure we're fully balanced and those last little questions we've had, you know, that popped up, chamber being on and figuring out the additional gentleman with works. This is largely what you will see as the final version and figuring out, again, the final add the number and what we put in there, so.
We'll put this on the agenda.
Yeah. Well, if nothing there, then we can move over to the fee schedule. Just one of the things that I wanted to make sure we talked about, since we do normally adopt that with the budget going into the next fiscal year. So what I went ahead and did is if there was any changes in any of them, I went ahead and created a separate column and then highlighted those changes. There was one or two that I added from what I sent out, I think last night or this morning, I can't remember at this point. But, so that's why I printed off that.
Any changes are yellow, right?
Yeah, any proposed changes are in yellow, yeah. So I'll go through a little bit here. So the first ones you'll see on the first page there, we have the residential alterations and additions over five hundred square feet. This is a new category, but something that talks with A O C A. Is normally if it's over that five hundred square feet, they're having to do more inspections than something under that number. So they feel like it needs to align appropriately with our normal squared footage residential numbers. And so that's just basically what that would show is adding that and saying that it would need to be based on the table below. Obviously, most of them is gonna fit in that first one, because that first one is zero to one, is to fifteen fifty or fifteen hundred. So most of them are gonna fall in that one anyways, but just in case it shows that. Additionally, under the residential construction and the commercial construction, we added that plan review would need, on the residential side, forty percent of the total cost would need to be due at the application submitted. So this has come up a lot recently and Paula probably can speak to some of it too, when she was handling the permits for a while for us. Is we're having kind of two situations happen where, one, they're submitting stuff and then they're walking and deciding not to move forward on the project, but we've already submitted for a plan review. And so we're having to pay those costs with A O C A, but we're not getting anything, because then trying to track them down to pay is almost impractical. And so that's really the big scenario. Help me out on some other stuff we've run into.
Just basically when they actually doing the, we're waiting on A O C A to approve the apartment. They've already done the approval, but we're waiting for them to start doing the work and do the inspection. So we're just waiting on that and they start sometimes late and, or they don't start at all. But most of the time, they've already gave me the, the bill. I have to pay them and they have not paid anything at all. So we have to get something, you know, before we even.
So we're just trying to cover some of our initial costs, there's no change to a cost?
Basically skin in the game, you know, be submitting.
Correct, yes. Yeah, and then on commercial, because commercial and multifamily already has the plan review and inspection costs separated, that would just be the full cost of the plan review under commercial one, what we do. And so that's where you see that in parentheses after the commercial and multifamily plan review.
One of the things that I brought up in some of the council meetings is that cost for publishing, like in the news paper.
Yeah. And we can, we can probably get to some of that in the planning and development, because that's normally when we're seeing some of those.
Because right now, we're pretty much absorbing the whole.
We're absorbing a good chunk of it, yeah. Yeah, so, I mean, you could theoretically say we're absorbing everything, once you add staff time or anything else that do that, so. If you don't mind, we can get that and I'll look through these and then we can get to that one for once.
Zach, I have a question, and it's more with the category.
Yeah.
So that one is listed as residential construction.
Yes.
And then the next one is commercial and multifamily plan review.
Yes.
So is that the same thing, the plan review is construction, or?
Well, so if you, on your commercial, if you notice, you have the commercial and multifamily plan review. But then also, if you go down a little further, you actually have the commercial and multifamily inspections. So what they, the way that residential is basically inspections and plan review is the way A O C A does that. So the cost you see on the residential, it's both. Whereas on commercial, they've always, they have it in their system where they split the plan review and then the inspection.
But there's nothing with the construction?
Construction would be more on the inspection side, so that's why you have the inspection portion.
So multifamily is like duplexes and so forth?
Yeah.
And so I.
I know where you're getting, but I think it's there.
Yeah, the thing is, so I'm picturing myself, I'm gonna go into our website and I wanna get an idea how much it's gonna cost me.
Yeah.
So how can I figure out, if we're saying residential construction, how do I figure out the commercial construction?
The commercial construction would be based on valuation, so for, let's just say, I have, obviously, we're not gonna have a dollar, but a dollar valuation, they're gonna pay fifty-five dollars plus administration fee and the seventy-six fifteen administration.
So maybe this one should be commercial construction slash plan review?
Yeah, that's fine.
See what I'm saying? Because if somebody reads this, they're just gonna say, oh, it's the plan. I know that it includes that, but I'm just saying, just so we can have associated terminology and those of that.
Yeah, we can edit that, that's fine.
Okay. That'll be good.
Is there one person that actually does this? When somebody comes in and they want a permit and we have to go to the fee schedule?
Well, they're supposed to provide the valuation. A O C A would confirm if it's unreasonable in their mind, based on what they provided.
So what we charge determines that.
It's, they're ultimately providing the valuation and that's what we're going with.
Based on our.
Just like, you know how T R C sends us a letter and says, it's, I'm gonna charge a city this much to go ahead and do this review? That's basically the same there.
Yeah, so I come in, I have a new, I have a new business that I wanna go out and build, right? A new commercial space I'm gonna build, and I provide a ten thousand one hundred valuation. And A O C A is gonna charge, if they agree with that valuation, right? They're gonna make sure that it makes sense, given what you're wanting to do, but they're gonna then charge accordingly and they tell us this is what.
So basically, how much is listed here?
Correct.
Zach, but we get the input from A O C A?
I should have grabbed it from my office, I apologize. But one of the things that they, A O C A wanted to pull out, so you see the solar in-ground swimming pool, manufactured home and irrigation. So when the R F P that I think Matt had done with A O C A, that, when we selected A O C A, there were certain fees in there and they've had to kind of finagle how they handle these particular situations. So with, based on the, if you go to the end of the doing inspection one, you have the other projects not listed at one thirty. So they're trying, they're basically taking the one thirty and they're adding what they know, how many inspections are necessary and trying to come up with a number that gets them close to the amount that they're covering their costs, right? And so what they would like to do is go ahead and add specific categories for solar, in-ground swimming pool, manufactured home and irrigation. I will say that on the first three, it's probably a little bit more, anywhere from, you know, fifty to a hundred dollars more that someone would be paying under this scenario than the previous scenario, of them trying to work the numbers to make it make sense. Irrigation would actually be slightly less of an amount. So, and the problem is, is they, you know, some of these have multiple inspections that they have to take care of. And, you know, the plan review, sometimes on some of these, is a little more finicky. Manufactured home right now, the way we've treated manufactured homes is actually to fit it under the residential construction category. So that one probably actually would decrease as well. And it probably doesn't make sense that a manufactured home would have to pay the same price as like a site-built home, you know, from square footage wise, but it's really, it's whatever council would like. But that's how they've treated them, because it is less inspections than a traditional home would be.
Should we include in here with those fees? Paula, what is the term that we use for the fee of somebody moving a facility or something into the city? Remember, we have a, we have a fee, if somebody, they have to get a permit in order to move, like a shed or something like that, remember?
We have the one for the mobile homes, that they have to move, the mobile homes for years.
The mobile homes, and then we also have them for sheds and everything else.
Storage, like pre-built ones?
Yeah, we have something in place because, and it's in our ordinances, because we didn't want somebody just to show up and put it down and then, then we're going backwards and saying, okay, how did this show up? So they're supposed to get a P, a permit. And it's very specifically in the ordinance that if they move it in, they have to move it out.
If they didn't get the permit.
If they didn't get the permit.
Yeah. I would like to, and we can definitely add something, I would like to check, because I know state law has preempted, at least on the manufactured homes, the ability to charge like a moving permit, because a lot of cities would do that. That was a very traditional thing to have, where we couldn't charge somebody for that. Now, the sheds and that kind of stuff, I don't think this matters.
But it was mostly, it was just for stuff like that.
We had that it was for house building structure moving permit, and that was just like five dollars before. We didn't have one for the shed or anything else, it was just basically for that one. And that's what I had, this is what we had the old one.
The council did pass, we did pass in here, an actual, and the ordinance got updated.
Because I never saw the actual form, like up at the front. So I was going through everything that we had for, all the permits that we had, that we given out. And that was one, but I didn't see anything for shed or anything like that. It was just the homes, the, it was homes of building structures. So it would be that one, it was only just five dollars. That one didn't make it on the last year, did it? I didn't see it on this.
No, it was not.
Look at the ordinance.
Yeah, I'll take a look.
Take a look at it, but we did establish something, so if there's a fee, let's put it on here. Take a look at it, but we did establish something, so if there's a fee, let's put it on here.
Okay.
So people already, if they're looking at this, they know that it's part of the master schedule, because we do have it listed out there.
Um, the only other change under building permit, uh, fees would be, um, just a, a name change, just to clarify what falls under this other project types not listed above category, just to give, we, we get the question a lot, so just making sure it's.
About the miscellaneous?
It's, you know, minor alterations, driveways, which that kind of stuff, so. Yeah.
Is that, is that.
Obviously that's not an exhaustive list, but it just gives a general idea of what it is. Uh, the only change to that would be the, um, above-ground pools. So we had previously on, uh, last year's fee schedule, we put above-ground pools as, um, under the simple permit, uh, but the problem with that is, on simple permits, we don't ever really do inspections on those, other than like we've talked about, our compliance officer making sure it's built appropriately to what we agreed to and that kind of stuff. Um, but there are inspections on the above-ground pools still, so we wanted to make sure we are capturing some costs by, um, AOKA on that.
Is it that one thirty?
That would be a one thirty, yeah. So before it was fifteen bucks, but it would, yeah, it would shift to a one thirty.
We listed somewhere the type of pool and the height, if I remember.
So we did fences that way. Fences are under a certain height, would be simple.
Probably it's.
Well, last year, last year again, we did have above-ground pools as simple permit, so what I'm, what we're doing is pulling that out of the simple permit and putting it under this one. So, yeah.
So you're, you're, uh, preparing your fence line, we have to get a permit for that? Like, like, uh, maybe a shaneling, um, got a hole from just wear and tear, and we go and put a new little, say it's maybe ten feet by feet?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's definitely limitations, I mean, a lot of people repair and, and replacement very two different things, right? So it's kind of that distinction of what, how much are we repairing? Uh, in that scenario, no, I wouldn't make you get a permit, but.
You can see the five feet.
Yeah.
All right. I won't be doing anything, so.
We'll be watching.
No, I didn't say that.
So that's it on the, uh, thank, the building permit ones, uh, like I said, we'll look at the structure moving permit and everything on that. Um, fire marshal fees, um, uh, chief sent me yesterday to go ahead and, basically he wants to double the, the permit fee for all the, the fees across the board for fire marshal, so that's why all of those are highlighted and they should be doubled appropriately, so. You have any questions on that?
As long as it stays below twenty-five thousand, no, no charge.
Real quick, the one before that, the banners, what do you, uh, like the placement of?
The problem is, is, you know, we talked about this, is, you know, we don't have, one, the ability to really do it, uh, we don't have the equipment, we don't have, so we probably need to just remove that honestly, because one, we've never had one.
Yeah, but we've been wanting to do it forever.
But anywhere where it would be, it's a problem with Tech dot.
Yeah, but if it's a problem with Tech dot, then it would be a problem with Tech dot in all the little towns that I've been going to, and in Somerset, I'm like, I'm just saying that we've been trying to do this forever, and then I hear one thing, I hear, uh, it's up to CPS, and, you know, all these other people have CPS.
I mean, if you're co-locating, so, I mean, in historical knowledge, and this comes, obviously every region of Tech dot is different, every, you know, district office, different ways they handle things. Um, but if you're, you know, attaching anything, uh, I mean, we just had a CPS meeting where they were talking about Christmas decorations and attaching to CPS poles and getting approval for that. So if we are attaching to CPS poles and that kind of stuff, then yes, they're required, uh, there, there is some permitting and, and requirements that CPS has. Uh, Tech dot, the only place you're putting banners probably in the town, uh, on our major third fairs, they're all owned by Tech dot, it's Tech dot right of way, so they're the approval, and we've been told on several occasions that that's not something that they're willing to approve for us.
That's if it's on Tech dot equipment, right?
That over their right of way, because it's extending across their right of way.
Why is it only us? I'm just saying because I, I've been seeing every little town do it, and they're all on CPS deals. Even on the.
Give me, give me an example, which, which, which town are you talking about? Give me an example.
Somerset, um, Casterville.
So some of these, you also gotta remember the maintenance portion of it. Some of these are actually maintained by their local, whether it's their public works or their, their, um, their local power, you know? They, they have their own control of being able to do, the, the utility poles are owned by them. They put the poles and they do that stuff. Do we own any, any poles?
No, but I'm talking about CPS to own.
Uh, I'm, I'm with you, but I'm just saying, there, there's, the other portion, I'm just trying to say why in the past the council has said, hey, we, we're not gonna do that, okay? I mean, we don't even have a truck. We don't even have a truck. If you go to Casterville, if you go to Hondo, I, I, I don't know about Somerset, but they have the equipment to be able to do it themselves. Tech dot is not gonna come in with their truck and.
And it's, and it's not really high. It's not really that high to get, and put a, one of our trucks, you stand on the back there and put it, put your bubble on it?
You can't do that.
Huh?
You can't do that.
Why not?
We should.
You're not gonna fall. You're not gonna fall, you're on a whole flatbed. I'm just like, it, it's just, uh, like, there's something, there's something there that's stopping them from doing it besides all that. But anyway, I just, it's still in my mind, so I keep on bringing it up.
Yeah, I mean, I think, here, here's, would be my suggestion, and, and, you know, I probably should put this in here, but I think, I know this has come up before we've had this conversation. From everything we're hearing is, we're not able to now. If that changes at some point, we can look at putting that, but I don't think that's changed.
You said now, right? We're not gonna be able to do it now, because we did it before.
I think the city actually put poles in, uh, I have to go back and look at them on McDonald's, right in front of Houston Mom's place. I think there's a pole there and one across at the city. Don't swear me to that, but I remember the city had put some poles in because of that banner on McDonald's.
Yeah, it's gone, one, one of them is gone.
Oh, maybe that's the issue, okay.
Yeah, one of them is gone.
We'll get the fire department involved in it.
I'm sure if you talk to them, they'll be happy to help.
That would be, but once again, if you look at the time, if you look on their placement, you imagine having a crew that they have to replace stuff on daily, on a weekly and a monthly basis?
No, I'm talking about stays there for a while.
And, and how much, just think about it, okay? It could be a different discussion, but if I'm gonna pay, I'm gonna pay twenty-five dollars a week to put a banner up. How much does it cost for the truck? How much does it cost for the individuals to go ahead and do that? And I'm just saying the fee doesn't even match what it would need to increase if we did do that portion of it. And I will tell you that one of the communities that you just mentioned about the banner, they do the banner, a few months ago was talking to me because they wanna put an electronic sign. I don't know, but I'm just saying, they wanna start advertising electronically, because they don't have electronic plates. That's a difference that we have compared to, to Casterville, Somerset, all the places you mentioned, they don't have electronic. Food for thought.
What do you mean electronic? All I go, I have to.
Yeah.
Okay, well, what does that have to do with what I'm talking about?
Instead of the banner.
Yeah, but you see, these are a lot better, went all the way down the road.
Yeah, I, I remember there was a big issue with Tech dot and the banners, and that's why we stopped them a lot years ago. I don't remember what it was, but they.
I don't, I don't know if they just grandfathered in, but I know that they don't put any more money than what they need to into that, and they, the city's pretty much relaxed. But I, I will tell you, if for some reason we decided, and, and honestly, Zach is putting it on the agenda to remove it off of this and let the council decide, because these rates, these rates do not equate, they do not equate, I mean, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna pay twenty-five dollars, I, okay, let me just say this. I'm not gonna pay.
The expenses.
Exactly, I mean, how much does it cost me to get the truck, use the truck? We pay, each employee, we pay them, what, uh, I'd just say public works, twenty-one, twenty-two dollars an hour?
Lower, but yeah.
Okay, just say twenty, okay? Just say twenty, well, the lower end I'm talking about.
No, I, well, higher end or way, but lower end, I mean.
So just put it, huh, just put twenty bucks, okay? So you got two guys on one side, that's what you're gonna need, and you got two guys on this side, right? And you're gonna be out there for at least an hour, how much is that? Twenty, 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 that's eighty dollars. That doesn't include the trucks, so you have eighty dollars and then we're gonna go ahead and charge somebody.
But, but does the truck cost that much to just take it out a block, round the block?
Well, it's not, it's not the truck.
Oh, and people. I mean, the eighty dollars, we, we have something, we're gonna advertise, it'd be worth the eighty dollars.
We would need to create, we would need to create a schedule to get ourselves, all this and what these guys have been doing in the last few years have been getting everything to where the city is at least, we're not supposed to make a profit, it's break even, right? The cost of whatever it is, so at a minimum, for us to put a banner up, just to put it up, is eighty dollars. Minimum, I'm ju, just using my example, with four people, right, two, two. And then it's another one, so somebody comes in, I wanna put a banner up, okay? That's gonna be a hundred and sixty dollars. And that doesn't include the banner.
That's out of your own house, too?
No, you gotta work it out, because you gotta have a sets, if you go look at these, they're all pre-designed for the city and they slide things in, they have them pre-made, and they slide into the same construction that they have to be able to hook up. So I, I think everybody's just looking at it differently, but I think with this one, for right now, until there's a, a better solution and we come up with, with the right amount for the compensation for the folks, we can do that.
We'll, we'll take it off.
Okay. Everybody's, you should have just done pulling it out.
No, 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 sir, no, sir. Um, moving off that one, back to the fire marshal fees, Matt was saying, um, I think when it got sent over, the, there's two no-charge ones under the plan review and then, uh, under miscellaneous annual commercial public building fire inspection. A fair point is they, they, it still costs them to go do something, so we probably should consider charging something, even if it's like twenty-five bucks on those, so if council's comfortable with that, then, um, I'll go, I'll make sure to add that and put that, um, and relay that back to Richie as well, or Matt?
Yeah, I think, I think that would be beneficial, twenty-five.
We're paying, we're having to do something to do, you know, regardless, it's not like we just, you know, look at it and throw it down.
I mean, so right now, if somebody has an annual commercial and public building fire inspection, we don't charge them anything? If they're required, if they call and say, hey.
Like daycare.
We wanna, if they, and we've got those listed in there, but if another business that is not required by law to have an annual inspection, but they call and say, we want you to come do an annual inspection for us, that should be a fee, that is different than us saying, we're gonna go do a spot inspection at our facility. If we're showing up, if I go tomorrow and I'm gonna go to McDonald's to check, make sure they're keeping it clean for fires, no charge, that's us doing it. But if they're requesting something from us, that should be a fee, again, it's not covering a hundred percent of our costs, but it's, we're covering some of our costs.
Council, you okay with twenty-five dollars?
And our fees are extremely low compared, we first adopted in two thousand and nine, so, first time we've changed since then.
Michael, you okay? Twenty-five dollars? And that's for those, for those categories that there's, that said no charge.
Yeah, yeah. Um, the next, uh, change is all the way down in library, and on this, it's page forty-five at the bottom, so. Um, but, uh, right at the top of that page, uh, one thing that Cassandra has brought up to me, um, and I think she, we've talked about it at a department level, is, uh, Bear County has made a change with, uh, not allowing, if, if you are not a Bear County resident, uh, you cannot get a public library card in Bear County. Um, and so we have seen an influx of people coming over, especially if they're very close to the line, right, coming over here, um, and so, uh, she, she's kind of put it on hold and said, hey, well, I'm not gonna issue anything until we figure out, because we think we need to be charging something for that situation. So what she's asked is for non-lital residents, and because we have a contract with Atascosa County, um, that, uh, prevents, uh, you know, we, they share some costs and things like that, so basically we're capturing if, if you're a non-lital resident, um, or, uh, and that might need to change slightly, I don't know, I'm pretty good with it, but, and not in Atascosa County, um, then, uh, you would be charged twenty dollars annually for.
Well, that one, for Medina?
Well, Medina, I know, I need to change that slightly, but.
It's essentially a Medina, isn't it?
It is, but we don't, we have a contract with Atascosa County, so, yeah, we have, we have a contract with them for.
Yeah, we just need to change it.
I, I just need to change the language a little bit, but basically, if you don't live in Atascosa County, um, and you're not a resident.
Why not just do it the. Or do, we pay in Atascosa County, Texas?
We, we do, we do, and we're saying if you're in Atascosa County, you, you're gonna fall into the other one.
I don't know.
But you're a resident, so you're not falling under that.
Mike, can we just leave it for non-lital EJT residents, or ETJ residents? Is that against the Atascosa rules? I don't see how, just because we're there in our county and they don't live inside of our city.
But what's the Atascosa contract? I don't have, I don't have my time here, I don't have my time. And then they just, they buy us five thousand dollars for the books that you're.
Yeah, so they're, they're, they're purchasing, uh, books, they're paying for training for the girls to go to, they, you know.
It's in there saying that anybody who's in Atascosa County.
So that, that specifically is not in there, but I feel like, I, I'm not saying we would be in violation of the contract by not, not putting it, but I think because they contribute, um, I think it would be very difficult to say we're gonna restrict those individuals from checking out books if you're in that county.
So let's, let's play with the wording on that.
Yeah.
The other thing too is how much do we charge for a basic library card?
Nope.
No, no charge.
Lost or additional? But what's initial?
Initial is none, no charge.
I like the way it's listed. Oh, no, you do have.
I do have it, I know, I have it, I have it wrong, but.
Yeah, I would like to leave it as non-lital.
Yeah, we, we do not charge, if you, if you are, anybody walking in today, it doesn't matter. You're not though.
Yeah, I, I work in San Antonio, I would love to be able to go through the library in that county, because I'm not a resident. Although I worked there, and I spent my money there.
So, but if you lived in San Antonio, you're still gonna be charged a library card, at least the cost of the card.
Yeah.
I, I don't know, I'm taking.
I think they do, like, if you're in Bear County, they charge for library cards, uh, I think it's very nominal.
Yeah, it's just enough to cover the card.
Yeah, but if you're a non-county resident, then they will not, they won't get your card at all, so you can't check anything out, so.
And maybe our cards don't produce or nothing, so I don't know.
If we, if you all feel okay, and where, if you're a vital resident, you don't get charged as part of what they get, but let's put it on there, because we have other charges over here that are, there's no charge, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's just something that's never been on there.
Somebody's reading it, they know, hey, you're a resident, now, the only thing I would ask, Zach, please talk to, to, uh, to, uh. No, I'm trying to think, well, no, it wouldn't be you, let's just go ahead and ask Cassandra, but the thing about it is, our school district boundaries actually go different ways.
Yeah.
So, you know, and I know there's a relationship between the school district and the library that goes along with that.
But I think, well, it does extend to past our ETJ, I was gonna say.
Yeah, that's what I'm going with that.
You have a school ID, right?
Yeah, I was gonna say, can't they use their school ID?
Yeah, that would be.
A lot of resident or a lot of ISD.
Ah.
School district, something like that, yeah.
Top tier.
Change the way.
Yeah, either way, the wording does need to change, but the biggest, the biggest reason of adding something was to, for those that don't qualify to that, that we are getting something off of, uh, that, so.
Yeah, but let's put it on there, if it's, you know, who gets no charge, so it's easy, once again, I'm, I'm looking at it as somebody reading it in the website, and it's like, well, how much? I don't know if I live in Lidl, you know, how much that costs?
Got it. Easy enough. Um, under Parks and Rec, on that same page, um, this is something I added, uh, so. Easy enough. Um, under Parks and Rec, on that same page, um, this is something I added, uh, so this will be different than what was, um, sent out. Um, but I think the rental fee for private parties sponsored by a senior citizen probably needs to just be removed. Um, I mean, if they're a resident or non-resident, they just pay that amount. I, I mean, I don't think, I don't know how many, if anybody's ever actually fallen under that and been charged that, um, it, it's just the one rental fee, I think, whether you're a resident or a non-resident, we don't, we don't still get them.
Just take that line.
The people that are here on the.
You're, they are paying, they, you know, they're paying a less deposit under the scenario and maybe, maybe we can remove that too, I don't know, but, I mean, the deposit can stay and, but the rental fee would just fall under.
Yeah, with.
Rental fee resident, rental fee non-resident, so. So that, that's that particular change. Um, the security fee, uh, chief had asked, um, that we move that up from forty dollars per hour per officer to forty-five dollars, uh, per hour per officer. And you'll see that on both the annex and.
And that's based on what he wants to say. Well, he doesn't have to say.
Well, they, they pay that to, yeah, as a part of there. But, you know, most of these events that are having that, um, it's taking a lot of the officers' time and so, you know, really trying to, you know, it's hard to cover, I think, those events sometimes and from some.
I mean, the officer's taking his day off to spend five, six, seven hours at an event here for somebody's party. That officer's gonna think, is that, how much is that? Is that worth my time off away from my family, on my day off? That kind of thing. So, and when everybody else is breaking through, in that range.
They're already at that range.
Back to that, above, don't go to San Antonio and try to get for that.
And I know this is not them, but if you would put, it's event plus one half hour before and one half hour after.
After, yes. Just to clarify.
It's, no, it's clear.
Yes.
Question, going back to the pavilion at the park.
Yes.
Safe to assume that if they rent the pavilion, they, they don't need to worry about the electricity, it's always on?
Well, we set it up, this is the small little, no.
The pavilion yes.
Pavilion, yes, yes. The gazebo, no, unless we turn it on.
Yes, and they, they wire on, then they pay for the electrical.
Correct.
I'm, I'm with you. The, the thing, the thing about it is, if I go over to the pavilion, I do have to put a deposit, I get that. Like an evening night event, it's thirty bucks.
It's the same amount as a day.
But if I just go over there, I pay twenty-five bucks and it just skipped the electricity.
These are just the fees that have been there forever. They all change whatever y'all want to change.
I know, I know, I'm just saying, that's the thing.
Does it get rented out or what? The pavilion? If it doesn't, then leave it somewhere.
I mean, it's, it's here, but it's, I mean, more people are just going over there and visiting it, I think, than probably actually renting it. This is just to secure if you wanted something truly over there.
I think it's just clarification. So, is alcohol allowed in the park?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, glass bottles are not allowed in the park.
So, if I have a party at the pavilion and if I have a party at the, you know where I'm going, at the community center, why do I have to pay for an officer at the community center and not at the pavilion?
Well, and I, we didn't ultimately have the event, but, like, they canceled, but we were, there was one that was gonna be serving alcohol, um, and we, we told them they would need security, so I probably just need to basically copy that in that particular, those ones.
Good catch.
Because we, we were gonna do that in that particular situation.
I thought it'd be more important, you know, it was the open pavilion. People get a little bit too much to drink and your friends start bowling in and who belongs here and who doesn't, and now we have rival groups.
Man, I just, I'm gonna throw a party in the gazebo and I pay twenty-five dollars for the electricity? And for two, two police officers? No, maybe one. How many do I need? Just one?
You're needing just.
One for.
Just go have the party.
One for up to a hundred people with alcohol.
Oh, I'm, I'm getting forty-five bucks and twenty-five bucks and I'm throwing a party at the park. See? That works out good. No, funny how that works out. No, but honestly, I think the reason that between, between, you know, our council and previous councils, it's always about making the park accessible, right?
Yes.
And we want people to enjoy it and we don't need to be, we're not here to make a profit or anything.
Don't worry, they're going.
But when we look at this, we just need to make sure, just like Michael mentioned right now, it's about fairness, right? So we just need to keep it fair and prosperous when we look at the different areas, so.
Perfect. Um, I will skip planning development, because I know there's some conversation on that, because I think the rest will be fairly easy. On utilities, uh, and we'll, we'll come back to that. On utilities, the, um, the first change is the initial setup fee. Right now, we're, we're only charging five dollars, but I can tell you the staff time to process those and set up the utility accounts and all that is much more time, uh, than the five dollars that we're gonna pay, so looking to move that up to at least twenty-five, uh, on that. Uh, and then, uh, this is when, um, we get into, and we will have an item on Monday's agenda to, a public hearing and, uh, the ordinance to do the water rates, but based on the water and wastewater study, uh, this is where we're landing for the next few on what we're doing with our, our rates. And so, adding the categories for, um, because the, the amount is the same, regardless of whether you're considered residential or small business, based on the feedback that we received, uh, you'll see the amounts that we would charge as a base rate, uh, and then you'll go down to the volumetric rates, um, and you'll have where we're adding the, um, the base rate based on meter size instead of what it used to be, which was, you know, twenty, uh, across the board, um, and then plus the, the, their volume. Uh, and then the, the same, as you see, it goes down there, um, and that's on that. We also, on the, back on the base rates, then you'll have the commercial underneath the residential or small business as additional line items there. So, and this is all based on, again, the feedback from the water and wastewater study that, uh, you've Jen provided for us. Uh, on the sewer, uh, and I think I made changes without adjusting it, but right now, the sewer rates are twenty dollars, not twenty-two dollars, and I have no calling. And what we're looking to do is go to twenty-two dollars, so it's a ten percent increase on the sewer, uh, base rate, but everybody would pay the same, um, because that's how we have it set up, okay, so. And that's it on utilities, unless there's any questions. And again, we'll have a public hearing on this for Monday night, uh, and then, um, the ordinance, and then, uh, if, if approved, then, uh, we would, uh, there's notifications that have to go out to our residents in the newspaper and various things like that, but, uh, are required statutory going, uh, to, uh, for these things.
Well, we can do this in the first of year.
Yeah, so this would go, uh, there'd be enough time to, to do that in order to, the first billion cycle after the new year.
So the stages were not put into this document?
Yeah.
Was it gonna be utility?
Yeah, that's one thing that, um, I did not add, um, but we need to, um, uh, go back and, and add, so thank you for noting that. Uh, and you're talking about the, uh, the drop search, correct?
Zach, go real quick, and Paula, if somebody's putting a water well, does that require us sending it to TRC or an engineer to review?
Yes, I mean, I'm not reviewing.
So, should we look at the permit fees also on there? And maybe, uh, it could be something as simple based on.
I mean, we could do like we do with like the planning where it's just actual cost, you know?
Yeah, 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 because these, these amounts are pretty low.
I mean, I don't know the last time we've had one, but Fair, we did, yeah.
Yeah, maybe like a review slash per, permit fee or maybe review fees, because it would be a review fee, right?
I mean, you could, you could have the ten dollars plus actual engineering costs, plan review or whatever, you know? If you wanted to keep the same amounts, but, you know, have it.
At the additional cost.
Just at the additional cost, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, we can do that, so. Uh, and then, um, I wanna go back, like I said, to the planning development. We didn't have any changes there, but I know, uh, again, I said we would revisit that based on, um, Congressman Rodriguez's comments, so I know, uh, you've asked, uh, in a couple of different council meetings and, and even internally here at the office, of covering our costs. We, we obviously went up on some of these last year, um, to try to help, um, uh, with our costs, but normally on like zoning change, uh, you know, variance, when we're notifying and we have requirements on, um, notifying in the newspaper, um, obviously, the, the costs associated with that notice is, is not being covered, um, and so, I don't know.
Can you look and see what other cities do?
I can, um, I, you know, it's, I think I had mentioned before, it's, uh, we had, in cities that I've been in, it's, uh, I had one situation where we were eating a lot of the costs and the other where, um.
Because I know it's a city saying publicly, hey, be aware that this is happening.
So, are we just looking at the zoning change application?
Um, so, zoning change on, we do require, uh, when the variances or any public hearing, if the zoning matter, you do have a requirement to post in the newspaper.
So, any of these are gonna have a newspaper, why don't we just plus newspaper add charge? Because in that way, you can adjust the newspaper this, this year, and we got a newspaper here. Newspaper, there we go, we got Divine News. So Divine News might say, hey, based on, you know, right now, we're charging, you know, two hundred dollars for this size of a, of a, an announcement, right? But next year, because of some cost, something changes, we don't have to be changing the fee. They come back and they say, hey, for the same size, the minimum size that you're asking for, now it costs four hundred dollars. Okay, well, guess what? We're gonna charge you whatever the newspaper's charging us, right?
I'm required by my employer to say that it's also cheap at half the price.
There you go, there you go.
Um, I, so, I agree with adding it. The one thing I will note, and you're gonna get a lot of pushback, is especially on like variances and things like that, when we, we have a fifty dollar fee and then you're gonna tell someone they owe four hundred as well. Um, again, I agree with the approach, but I just wanna make sure eyes wide open with.
Give me an example, which would be the variances.
Any of the variances that we just had with the pool, the.
That we're not in the newspaper?
The, the last one with the.
Any public hearing, any public hearing. The pool, the shed, the carport, any of those. So, again, I agree with the approach, I just, that's something.
So, find out, so we had those recent ones, so let's talk to Divine and find out how much they charge us.
Or we could come up with the city each half of the day.
Find out how much it is and at least we have an idea. I mean, I mean, I'm not trying to make money, but at the same time, I mean.
Do you see what other cities?
And, and I can, I can ask, like I said, I've, I've had it both ways, you know, in cities that I think are part of, um, even to the extent where on some of them, like on zoning change, we're required to send out to two hundred feet, you know, we would actually make the applicant do that themselves and prove that they actually did it. So, I mean, there, there's multiple ways we can do this. Um, it's just, uh, yeah, what, what council would prefer.
Oh, we, are, are you just, I mean, would the newspaper know how to put the ad together? We have to do it, right?
To make sure that the, the things that need to be in there are there.
I was just gonna say, you could say, you need to go talk to Divine and put.
Because otherwise, then, then they're doing that, then they don't do something and then they, then we're like, we can't even hold a meeting.
Well, if we're, we're having to spend the time putting to get into the processing and anything, we're not trying to make money. You know, David's idea is a good one, where, hey, we'll split the cost with you, but there's gotta be something, because honestly.
I'll, I'll look at some of the other cities, and so when we bring the final version or, uh, we'll probably have, we probably will have that, um, I mean, I'm trying to avoid that additional budget meeting, uh, but if we need to have it to wrap up some of these last minute things, with, probably we would, with the Chamber of Commerce and that kind of conversation, so, um, I'll make sure to have those answers by then.
Some of them for speed.
Yes.
So I have, I have one more question.
Sure.
Uh, and, and when I ask the question, you then know exactly what I'm talking about. So going back to the fact that how the person knows how much they're gonna be charged, I'm talking on the resident's side. So if I'm a resident and I wanna build a carport on my property and I come into the city and get a permit, I wanna make sure that when I leave the city on that day that I come in with a permit and I provide the drawings, whatever the city requires, I wanna make sure that when I leave, I know exactly how much it's gonna cost me, okay? I don't wanna come into the city and pay a twenty-five dollar fee and then come to find out where you're gonna be, you know, you're gonna be charged a hundred dollars for inspection and if we require an additional one, I think it's just one time inspection fee, right?
On certain situations, most of those, yes.
Because it's, a lot of it's based on the strike footage and the cost. So, what I'm getting at is that I wanna make sure that as a city, we are looking into that and when that resident leaves after purchasing that permit, they know exactly what they're gonna pay for. We don't currently have that in place, right?
I mean, I think we, we've come a long way with getting it lined up like this, right?
Which will help.
And which will help tremendously, um, especially if us building in that, you know, where now we're requiring that plan review upfront, we can say, this is the portion upfront, but the total cost is going to be X, right? We'll be able to present that. Um, so I, I think we're there, it's just a matter of, once we get this updated appropriately, then we'll have it.
Because what I'm trying to get is that when I come in and I pay that twenty-five dollar permit fee, but there's gonna be an additional hundred dollars for the inspection, then I know upfront.
Yes.
And maybe I'm not ready for it. Maybe that permit fee is good for a year, but then I'm not ready to start doing it and I know it's gonna cost me a hundred and twenty-five, for example, versus twenty-five.
Yeah.
So I think our custom, our residents deserve to know upfront, if you come in and get a, a permit, exactly what it's gonna cost you to do whatever it is you're trying to do.
And a, and a big, was really truly having it all broken down, so they can go on the website, they can have it here at the office, we can literally point to, this is your cost.
So that would be whoever's working with that person, they would go through our.
And, and I know, I mean, I see it all the time on her desk, she literally has it, right, uh, not, not Paul, but our permit tech literally has a copy of the current one right there, right, you know, all the time, so, and, you know, come in and ask me, hey, I just wanna make sure it's this category, right, we're, you know, this, so. Yeah, so that, that is a conversation that's currently happening. Um, once we align some of these better, then we'll even have a, an even more accurate, you know.
Well, thank you for putting this together, because we've been needing this for quite some time.
That's all I got.
Yeah, I covered the stuff that I had written little notes on already. Well, if we do not have anything else, uh, it is eight oh one, right, yeah? So we'll just go ahead and.
I'll make a motion.
No, actually, we don't need motions for this one. We just go ahead and close it out, since it's a workshop, so we can just go ahead and do that. So it's eight, eight oh one, eight oh one P M. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting. Thanks for being here, appreciate it.